Great. Okay, Anne, thanks. All right, it looks like we're still have a few more people entering the meeting. All right, it looks like the number stabilized. Welcome everyone to our Wednesday, October 27th, 2021. Public meeting regarding Oceanside Facilities and Consolidation. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting off with a roll call. When I say your name, would you say here? Each board member, I'm going to start with Raquel Alvarez.
Here.
Thank you, Mike Blessing.
Here.
Eric Joyce.
Here.
And Eleanor Evans.
Here.
Thank you, all board members are accounted for. We're going to go ahead and start this meeting, which is different from a normal board meeting that we have where we have many business items. This is one particular business item. I'm going to turn it over to the district who's going to provide information for us, and then we're going to open it up for public comment. So far, we have quite a few public comments and we're going to listen to each one of those. So I'll let you know when those start. So I'm going to turn it over, actually, we forgot the pledge, let's do the pledge real quick. All right, Dr. Vitale, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I would be happy to. Ready, Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing that. I will turn this over to the district to start their presentation. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you, Dr. Begin, and I just want to do a little bit of a historical relooking at this information for folks that maybe this is their first time they're joining us. So if you'll go to the next slide, this just gives an overview of what I'll be talking about. And so the board has been on a journey of consolidating schools for quite a few years in the Oceanside Unified School District. And more particularly for this team, there were two reports that were issued. One in 2017, before I became superintendent and before this board was constituted. It was done by School Services. Another, when I was here as superintendent and this board was constituted. And that was done by FICMAT, and that was in May of 2019. And the basic summary from both of these reports on district operations, facilities, and finances was that operational reductions in staffing and facilities to cut costs and compensate for declining enrollment needed to happen. This decline has been happening in the Oceanside Unified School District for over 20 years. People that have been here a long time know that they've seen school close school closures and consolidations happen prior to us considering it. The dates I'm going to use are from the California Department of Education. So if people remember them differently, my apologies to you. This is what we officially got from the CDE website. So San Rafael closed back in 2002. Pacifica closed in 2007. Dipmar in 2008 and Garrison in 2020. And we had the combining of Ocean Shores and Claire Bergner programs at Surfside. So we have been working on consolidations for over 20 years in this district due to the declining enrollment. Another portion of that report was that we needed to right-size our staff for the amount of students that we had. We've been working to do that over the last three and a half years, and we've been able to do that without any layoffs, which is a priority for this Board of Education and this administration. Recently, we conducted a long-range facility master plan, which confirmed we have more space than what is needed. And this for our current enrollment and our projected declining enrollment. And we are using about 75% of our space. So all of that leads us to the board engaging in conversations about school consolidation. On August 24th, the board met and the three questions that were presented to the board were, do we need to consolidate schools? Do we need to adjust boundaries? And how will we set our Measure W priorities? We presented facts to the Board of Education on declining enrollment in California, in San Diego County, and in Oceanside. We presented current and projected enrollment at all schools. We presented the current conditions of all of our facilities based on that long-range facility master plan. We asked to delay the boundary study until after the Board of Education made a decision on consolidation. And the board said okay to that and asked us to bring back consolidation options. So at our September 28th meeting, we brought back three scenarios. We considered things like walking distance, the size of the schools, the size of the consolidation, the location of schools to one another, school capacity and condition of the facilities. The board then narrowed those two, those three options down to two. We've collected over 700 public comments on a form that was sent out to all impacted households and put on our website. And we're taking public comment this evening. Next Tuesday, we're asking, next Tuesday, November 2nd, we're asking the board to approve our recommendation. And even though we're going to go into some more details tonight, I just on the front end wanted to remind the board that our recommendation is to merge our two smallest schools, Del Rio and Libby, at Libby, rebuild Reynolds Elementary School, and move all Surfside programs to Del Rio. So with that, we will go on to the next slide and Dr. Norman will remind us about some of the facts that we've talked about and present some additional information. Dr. Norman?
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be going through some of our slides, talking about different information pertaining to enrollment, pertaining to demographics, and hopefully answering some questions that people may have about our different scenarios. The slide you're looking at tonight focuses on enrollment. Enrollment looking at enrollment, looking at Reynolds, Del Rio, and Libby to start with. We're also going to be talking about Surfside in future slides, but right now, we're going to talk about the elementary sites. So with Reynolds, we have our enrollment, we're looking at it in two different ways. We have the TK through five numbers when we're looking at our general education population. And then throughout the district, we have students that are enrolled in different programs. And those would be in the scenarios we're looking at tonight. We would have our state preschool programs, we would have our special ed preschool programs and our moderate severe programs. We do have mild, moderate programs at all of our sites. Those students are considered general education students first, and they're in our general education numbers. And then the third column has our district capacity numbers. So looking at Reynolds, Del Rio, and Libby tonight, the colors are just to help you keep track of what we're doing. They don't mean anything other than just helping us delineate the different schools. Okay, next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, there, thank you. Now, we're going to look at demographic slides, so we're looking at the makeup of each of our school sites. So the first one we're looking at is socioeconomic students. And that's a little bit different than just low income. A lot of times when we're looking at LCFF funding, we're looking at the income levels. And that's what people are most familiar with. But when we're looking at CalPads, which is when we do our reporting, it's our first Wednesday in October, we report our CalPad students a little bit differently. It does include our students who are considered low income and qualify for free and reduced lunch. But then it also includes up to eight categories, and they could be things, and I'm not going to name all of them. But for example, both SED and low income have, sorry, SED and the LCFF low income have the component of the free and reduced lunch. But then there's also the component of both parents not having a high school diploma. There could be, when you go into the SED, it also considers homeless, it considers foster youth. And there's a number of other details that go with that, and that's why the percentages are different. And then you can see all of the other demographic data for Reynolds, Del Rio, and Libby is listed there. So I just wanted you to know why there was a difference between SED and low income, looking at the same students. Okay, next slide. When we talk about class sizes, this is something that people ask a lot of questions about. Throughout our district, we maintain class size ratios. And you might notice that in your student's class, one year, regardless of what school you're in, maybe you'll have 22 students in your second grade class. But then your child goes to third grade and they might have 24 students. In our district, we have two ways that we regulate our class sizes. Primarily, we have LCFF grade spans, and that's how we get funded. So for our K3, we have to stay at an average of 24 to 1 throughout the school year. So that does mean from time to time, a class could bump up above 24. But we have to look at it throughout the school in the grade span, staying below a 24 to 1. That's mandated for funding. If we even go over it for one reporting period, we could lose our funding. So we're very strict and adamant about how we staff with that to make sure that we're not over. That's why some parents might experience their child's class getting a new teacher as late as March, because it means that for that school with that grade span, we went over and therefore we have to add a teacher to keep our class sizes lower. And that's something that we do regularly. The other thing that we also adhere to is our contract with our, with ODA, our association. And we have this delineated and we review it annually. And we've even lowered some of our class size ratios in recent years. And so what you're seeing here with OUSD loading ratios is our most current agreed-to contract. Does it mean it's always exactly 24 to 1? It doesn't, but what it does mean is we do stay within our ratio and within our grade span. And we try to adhere to this as close as possible. So this is the same, no matter how big the school is. For example, maybe your Ivy Ranch where we're over 700, you could be at Del Rio where we have a smaller population. It doesn't matter which school you're at, the same ratios apply across the district. Next slide, please. So we've shared with you what the associated costs are. I've put at the bottom that this is the rough order of magnitude or estimate. And we always deal with ROMs whenever we're talking about projects that we haven't actually taken in and had an architect weigh in on, we haven't gone to DSA yet. So we're really looking at what are the potential costs. And so when we're talking about some of the different costs associated with our different scenarios tonight, if you look at a modular, now modular is a building that's flush to the ground. It looks like a regular building, but it does come all as one building. That's about 210,000. Now, if we have to put in electrical, if we have to put in plumbing, it raises the price between $50,000 and $100,000. And so you'll see when I'm talking about the scenarios, a modular at one site might cost, it does cost different than at another site. And that's because of if there's infrastructure or not. The second one we're looking at is the potential to rebuild Reynolds. That's something that we were asked to look at. That's a potential of 49 million. And we're going to talk tonight and just show you as kind of a little capture of what it looks like to build a school and how long it takes. And so when you're looking at that, it's not just the cost present day, but it's the cost as you go along in your project and you have escalation of costs. And then we have to modernize Surfside, that's estimated at 17 million. We do these estimates based on square footage. And then we have demolition of a site, depending on the site size, it could be 1 to 1.2 million dollars. But also, if you were to sell property, sometimes this can be negotiated into the, to the price of whatever happens. But if we were to keep a site, there is a fee that we have to pay to keep a site. And then we do have to also pay for, if we don't demolish the site, what the cost of security would be. And just to make sure that the site, the site still has to be maintained because it's part of our community. All right, next slide. Next slide. Thanks. So we're going to talk about two options tonight. The first option that we've been asked to explore is the merging Del Rio with Libby option. And so the circles take us through each of the potential steps that are involved with option one. So we have merged Del Rio with Libby. And the timeline for this that we're looking at would be next school year. So this isn't something that's immediate, but we would have the entire year to plan for. We would potentially move Surfside to Del Rio campus. And then we would rebuild Reynolds. And then we would place the current Surfside campus into asset management. And then from there, we would decide what we would do with it, and we'd have our 7-Eleven committee weigh in. And so again, that's the four different steps we would take with option one. So option two, overview, and we're going to go deeper into these, I'm just giving the overview to start with. We would merge Reynolds Traditional Program with Del Rio. So we have a traditional program at Reynolds, and we also have the two-way bilingual immersion program at Reynolds. So we would potentially look at splitting those two up and placing them at other sites. So we would have traditional go to Del Rio, TWBI to Libby. And then we would subsequently modernize Surfside, and we would place Reynolds into asset management. Next slide. So now let's, let's dive a little deeper into option one and see what that really looks like. So here's a little snapshot of what our boundaries look like. You can see we have Del Rio in the green, Libby in the light pink in the middle, and Reynolds on the left as I'm looking at it. And you can see that Del Rio and Libby are right next door to each other. The reasons that the district is recommending merging Del Rio with Libby is because of their proximity and also because of their size. They are our two smallest elementary schools, and we would be able to merge them. Next slide. At a bird's eye view of the boundary, you can see the red circle. It's important that you look at walking distances. Some students do get driven, but a lot of kids do still walk. And so the furthest walking distance from Del Rio attendance area to Libby is 1.17 miles. And the next slide shows us an up-close picture of that. So you can see here, Libby has the red arrow on the left as I'm looking at it. And then in kind of the salmon color, you have the Del Rio students to disperse throughout the area. And that's a map of enrollment. Next slide. So talking about option one, what would it take to put the two schools together when we're talking about facilities? And we've taken a lot of time to look at facilities. I've done the, just the numbers piece, and then I've sat with each of the principals and talked about our students and our staff, and what would it look like when we're physically putting all of our students and staff together to site? We have 30 classrooms that we would use at Libby. We would have, we would need all 30 classrooms to be able to merge the two schools together. Currently, Libby has a PE and a music room and two intervention classrooms. We do have the ability to add these modulators. Where we're at right now, we have the timeframe to be able to do that. We would still be able to merge them together. Having been a site principal for over a decade, I know that it's, it's nice to have the additional space. And so we would be looking at 34 classrooms. It's important to note that when you are merging sites, you have to look at CEQA. And CEQA has to do with environmental studies. You cannot put more than 10 modulators on a site without having to do a CEQA study, because we're only looking at potentially putting four, and those are four that would be housing additional space. We would be exempt, we believe we'd be exempt from CEQA according to legal. Next slide, please. Here's also continuing with option one and diving a little deeper, looking at Surfside. So if you were to merge Surfside into Del Rio, you can see how the students are spread throughout the valley. This is 2020 picture of students. You can see Del Rio up at the top and Surfside down on the left as I'm looking at it. There are a lot of benefits to putting our students at Del Rio and having our program for Surfside function out of Del Rio. It's a beautiful facility, as is Libby. Both the facilities we're talking about tonight are, it's located right next to a transit facility. We would not have to do a lot. I've sat down with the principal of Surfside, and we've mapped out what it would take if we were to put Surfside on the Del Rio campus and it would fit. We do have an extensive gym set up at Surfside, so we'd have to look at where that would go potentially in the NPR. But other than that, it would fit without having to add portables at this time. And we would then just have to upgrade the furniture for our older students. But that will be, you know, something that will definitely enhance the campus as well and the experience of the students. Next slide, please. So just to sum up, our option one, merge with Del Rio and Libby, you can see that there are the associated costs, which total over just $51 million. And now moving into option two. Now, we're going to look at, we have the same map as we did with option one, the three attendance areas. We have the green Del Rio, the light pink Libby, and the darker pink on my left as I'm looking at it is Reynolds. We're looking at merging Reynolds Traditional Program with Del Rio and merging Reynolds TWBI with Libby. So we'll go ahead and do this. Same slide as we saw for the last option, this is a bird's eye view of the walking distance. You can see the walking distance is greater. This is the furthest walking distance from Reynolds Attendance Area to Del Rio, and that being 1.87 miles. Next slide. This is a close-up view of the Reynolds into Del Rio. The red arrow denotes where Del Rio is, and then you can see where the traditional students are in terms of the Reynolds Attendance Area currently. Next slide. What would it take for the programs to come together? Del Rio existing classrooms that we would utilize would be about 22 classrooms. Looking at TK5 General Education, and that does include three mild mod classrooms. We would have about 30 that we need, which is eight. And then in speaking with the principal, if we were to keep the art intervention and the STEM intervention in place, we would need to add two more portables, which puts us at 10. And so again, that's important to note that if we were to go with the 10, we would have to then do a CEQA study. Next slide. And now here, this is another picture, because now we're going to be looking at TWBI and Libby. And you can see the bird's eye view with the circle, the furthest walking distance here from Reynolds Attendance Area to Libby is 1.74 miles. Next slide. And here you can see it's a very different picture. Most of the kids from Reynolds TWBI program do go to Reynolds and live in the area. But as you can see, it does pull students from across the district to come in. So it's not, everything's not concentrated in one area as we saw before. It's spread out a little bit more. One thing to also note, I have personal experience with TWBI. My three children are in it, and I've overseen it when I was a director of Ed Services. TWBI isn't as easy to split as we might think from a traditional program. You have some families who may have one child in one program and one in another. Or you may have families where one cousin is in one program, one cousin's in another. Or you could have childcare situations where the kids could be in different programs. So that's something else that's important to note that while it may look like just numbers on paper, and when we're looking at our families, it could get far more complicated. Next slide. So the overview in terms of will it fit? It will, because it's a smaller program. Our existing Libby classrooms again are 30. When we look at how many classrooms, we'll leave maybe 26. And then going back to the model we had at Libby, it would be PE, music, and reading intervention. We'd need 30 classrooms in order to move everything in and have all the space, and we would have that. Next slide. So for an estimated total, we have just over $21 million. It is less than our other proposal, but we're not looking at this through the lens of what would be the least expensive. We're really looking at what would be in the best interest of the district long term. And we still believe that merging our two smallest schools would be in the best interest. Next slide. So moving into that, when we're talking about the cost of these projects, you can see that there was a variant cost. This is a picture, it looks like just some colored lines, but it's really important to note. This is really our timeline of our Measure W issuance. And so even though we're looking at potentially rebuilding Reynolds, it doesn't mean that you spend 49 millions out of, million out of your first issuance. You have 160 million, we do, to spend over a number of years, over three different issuances. And so in looking at what would you need out of your first issuance for Reynolds? We would need about $5 million to get going when we're talking about design and DSA. And then we'd want to set about 10 million aside, you know, for the next couple of years to make sure that we have that to start our construction. The bulk of what would come out would be in our second issuance. So that means even if we set aside 15 million out of the first 50 million, we still have plenty of money to make a huge difference across the district with lots of projects, depending on what we decide to make a priority as a board. And so that could be anything from looking at the shade structures we've been talking about. We could look at playground equipment, we could look at painting, fixing projects. There's a lot of different things, looking at some of other sites. And what are the needs of our other sites that haven't been touched with modernization? So there's a lot of things, and we're not going to go into that in this meeting. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone had the same information that just because we decide to rebuild Reynolds, it doesn't mean that the whole issuance is taken up with just one project. We can still touch a lot of our schools and a lot of our families throughout the community. Next slide. So in summary, again, the recommendation is to merge Del Rio with Libby. It does merge our two smallest sites. What's fantastic about Libby also is that it's going to be a community school. So all of those resources will be available to our Del Rio students as well. It moves the fewest number of our elementary students. The majority of Del Rio TK5 students and staff can move together. It provides the shortest walking distance for students. It maintains Reynolds TWBI program where it is. It allows the Reynolds families in both programs to remain at one site. It could potentially capture Reynolds students attending neighboring districts. And it provides Surfside with a modernized site located near a transit center. So timeline for next steps, we've already had our September meetings. We're in our October community input meetings. At our next meeting, we're hopeful that we will have a decision from the board moving forward so that we can start making plans. And then we'll continue on with making plans. That's when we start really timelining out, ordering modulators. We'll be working with HR on when staff will be notified, how we'll work with staff on transfers. We'll start working with special education on designating sites that students would go to. What's really great again about our timeline with it only being October, we have a whole year of students with IEP meetings that we could start front-loading parents if we're going to be changing any sites. We could set up scheduled visits so that students can meet teachers or go with teachers. But there's a lot that needs to happen, but we have the time and the planning and the team to make it happen. And then we would continue to message throughout the year. And then starting in August, our new location would be ready for our sites. Next slide. And that concludes our presentation. And so we'll, I'm going to send it back to Dr. Vitale, and then we'll continue on. Thank you so much.
And I will kick it to you, Stacy, for a public comment.
I just want to ask my board colleagues, while we have Dr. Norman here, do you have any questions or need any clarification on any of those slides?
There's too many, let's do board, let's do public comment first.
You want to do public comment first? I'm looking at my other colleague. Okay, let's go ahead and start the public comment. We're going to call five people up at a time, and I'll let Ms. Givens do that. You have exactly three minutes. It has to be on the topic of tonight, which is the facilities and consolidation. And there will be a timer. So if we could ask you guys to adhere to that, that would be great. This is a meeting in which we want to listen to the community. So I will turn it over to Ms. Givens to take care of that.
Okay, our first five will be Naomi Morrison, Becky Doyle, Natalie Sanchez, Veronica Garcia, and Nina Garcia.
Naomi, it looks like you're first.
Okay, great, thank you, yes. Hi, my name is Noemi Morrison, and I have two children currently at Reynolds Elementary. I also live in the Crest neighborhood, which is right next to Reynolds. I'd like to concentrate on just two reasons to keep Reynolds Elementary open. The first being walkability, as was discussed in the presentation. Reynolds is located in the middle of several neighborhoods that are designed specifically for families. The Crest in particular, where I live, was built in the late nineteen-eighties. And the families that moved in when it was new and raised their children are now retirees. As these older people move out, young families move in. I've seen it. The landscape of my neighborhood has changed from a community of retirees to a neighborhood bustling with young children in just the two and a half years that I've been living in Oceanside. And part of the reason the Crest attracts young families is the presence of a walkable elementary school. It certainly was a factor when we were looking to buy. And so removing that school and forcing families to drive their children farther, it's bad for the environment. It increases traffic in areas that potentially already have congestion. And it really takes away the sense of community and belonging that comes from walking to school with your peers that you also see at other times in your own neighborhood. So that would be my first reason for wanting to accept the district's option one for and keeping Reynolds open. The other thing I'd like to point out is we're still in the midst of a global pandemic. The long-range facilities master plan was written in two thousand and seventeen and of course, it doesn't take into account a global pandemic that's still affecting us today. It's killed over four thousand people in San Diego County alone. The current crop of second graders at Reynolds Elementary have never had a normal school year, a disrupted kindergarten year, a virtual first grade year, and now they're masked and distanced. Our schoolchildren are still recovering from last year's virtual option. They're still catching up academically and their social and emotional development needs more time to recalibrate. Moving them to new facilities with new classmates while they're still recovering goes against the OUSD value of putting students first and maximizing their well-being. So I'd like to strongly encourage you to accept the district's recommendation to keep Reynolds open and modernized. I hope the reasons I've presented are as compelling to you as they are to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Naomi. Our next speaker is Becky Doyle. I'm not seeing Becky Doyle on here. Can we go to our third speaker?
Becky has to accept the promotion to be.
There she is. I see Becky Doyle. She just jumped on. Becky, are you ready for your public comment? Hello, Ms. Doyle.
Hi. Hi. My name is Becky Doyle. I've been teaching at Libby Elementary for twenty-two years. I'm extremely concerned with the school consolidations. It appears as though the district cares more about the money than the social and emotional health and academic success of the students. This should not be occurring, especially when our high-risk, underserved, and low-income students and families are struggling to survive and recover from a pandemic. The district has been planning for this for at least three years. The affected staff and families were not aware of the mergers until September twenty-eighth. The district did not officially notify the affected parties until October nineteenth. There has not been adequate time for staff and families to voice their concerns. The district needs to acquire more information about what the family needs, especially when there's not equal access to online surveys and technology. There are concerns that need to be addressed before a decision is made. Libby's maximum capacity is seven hundred and ninety-four students. With the merge, enrollment will be seven hundred and ninety and there's little room for growth. We will lose staff members who have established long-term relationships with families and we will not be a neighborhood school. We will have less support for our students because certain positions will be cut, thus increasing the staff-to-student ratio. We will not have room to provide essential programs, including music, special ed, counseling, incredible years, Boys and Girls Club, past programs, and interventions. There are concerns regarding busy intersections and the transient population. How will you ensure the safety of families walking to school? The community will be impacted by gang robberies if the neighborhoods are merged. This has been a historic problem. There's no possible way that these concerns can be resolved by November second. Please put a stop to the school consolidations. I urge you to take action to do what's best for our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Next speaker, Natalie Sanchez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Natalie.
Hi, my name is Natalie Sanchez. I am Libby alumni. I'm in my thirties now. I have children at Libby and I am currently now the Libby PTO president. Low-income schools. No, this district keeps saying our students come first, when that is not true. For years, you guys, all you guys cared about is money. How many increases has Dr. Vitale gotten in these past three years? Two. How many teachers has Libby gotten over these past three years? None. We've lost teachers for years. You want to tell us that the numbers are not going to be increased. You want to tell us that the number, the ratio to teachers are low. That is a lie and I know that for a fact because I volunteered for years at that school. So don't come and tell us that the numbers are going to stay low. That our children come first when you keep getting racist. You are selling Pacifica and you have not communicated.
Natalie, we're having a really hard time hearing you. I, I don't know about my other board colleagues, but I can no longer hear Natalie. Okay, Natalie, something happened. All right, she's on me. We'll try the next speaker and maybe Natalie will work out those technical issues. Veronica Garcia.
Can I have translation, please? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can we get somebody to translate, please?
I believe we have translation services on. Right now. Yes, can you hear me? Yes. Yes, okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Buenas tardes, junta directiva y superintendente Vitale. Mi nombre es Veronica Garcia y soy mamá de dos niñas de la escuela elemental del Río. Hago toda la, digo todo o me espero?
Puedes decir un poco más.
Okay. Estoy aquí en este día porque se nos ha dado la oportunidad de hablar acerca de las propuestas de tres o cuatro escuelas que serán afectadas de varias maneras. Somos escuela de título uno de bajos ingresos y si solo ustedes supieran lo que las familias tienen que pasar para llevar a sus niños a la escuela. La transportación es algo difícil. Precisamente este lunes cuando estaba lloviendo, miran las familias caminando bajo la lluvia y eso será difícil para ir a Libby. Es difícil pedirles que ustedes se pongan en nuestros zapatos, pero imagínense ustedes llevando a sus propios hijos a las escuelas mojándose. Estas propuestas se ven muy bien en el papel, pero en realidad son distintas. Si es verdad que las inscripciones están bajas, pero también tomen en cuenta que estamos en tiempo de pandemia. ¿Y qué va a pasar cuando los niños quieran regresar a la escuela o los papás quieren mandar a sus hijos a la escuela? Vamos a tener que sobrepoblar Libby, the Libby School. Del Río ha sido una muy buena escuela para mis hijas donde están aprendiendo y están contentas. El staff y todos los maestros han sido muy buenos. Del Río no se hizo de la noche a la mañana. Del Río te llevó años para hacerlo. También pueden, ¿qué va a pasar con todos los maestros que están ahí, con todo el staff que han construido? Pero tristemente, Del Río puede desaparecer de un solo segundo cuando ustedes toman la decisión que van a tomar. Ustedes han sido elegidos.
Me permiten rompirla, señora? Me permite? Okay, allow me to interpret, please. Good evening to the Board of Education, to Superintendent Vitale. I'm Veronica Garcia, mother of two students at Del Rio. This evening, we heard of the opportunity for three or four schools to be affected. And Libby, I'm sorry, Del Rio is a Title I school with students from low-income families. Many of the families to take their kids to school are walking. And there's an issue with transportation. For example, on Monday, when it was raining, I saw families walking and this would make it more difficult to go to Libby. I know it can be hard to imagine for some of you, but imagine yourselves getting wet taking your children to school. We have seen on paper how things look, but the actual situation is different. With the low level of enrollment, we're in a pandemic right now. What's going to happen when parents decide to bring their students back to school? Then Libby will be overpopulated. Del Rio has been a very good school. My children have been learning and have been happy. The teachers and staff are very good. Del Rio was not made from, in one night. It took years. And the teachers and staff have built this school, but sadly, it will disappear with your decision if you make this tonight. Continue. Veronica, you're still muted.
Veronica, you may continue, but you're muted if you have.
Ya, la último es, quiero decirles que ustedes han sido elegidos para ayudar a la comunidad. Ahora es el tiempo de hacerlo y hagan la decisión basada en la gente y no en los números. Muchas gracias.
Yes, the last thing I wanted to say is that you have been elected to help the community. Now is the time to do it. Please make your decision based on the people and not the numbers. Thank you very much. I'm going to try Natalie again. I noticed she just joined back up. Can we let her finish her public comment? She has her hand up. She has her hand up if you'd like to promote her. Try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm not sure up, I'm not sure up to where I got cut off. Oh, okay. As I was saying, I have been volunteering at Libby since my daughter was in preschool. She is now in seventh grade. You want to lie to us and tell us that the ratios have always been low? That's a complete lie. I have witnesses. It's not lies from like certain board members and Vitale because Vitale has done nothing but lie to us. We, I don't understand why you can't be clear or honest with the parents. You've guys had this for three years. It's been three years you've been planning this. And we get notified two weeks prior. The meeting was in September twenty-eighth. We didn't find out until three weeks after. And it wasn't from her. It was from staff members from other schools that were reaching out to me. How are we going to trust that you say that our children's education comes first when you can't give us a clue of what's happening in our community? You sold Pacifica for fifteen-point-eight million. Now you're going to try and sell Garrison. That will cover your deficit. I don't understand why you keep trying to close these Brown schools. Every single year, Libby gets a cut from teachers every year. Instead of giving us an extra teacher, you do combo classes. You have the money, but no, you decide to give yourself a raise. You've been with us for three years and you've gotten two raises. How is, and we don't get an extra teacher? We fought to get a full-time counselor. Now if these students come, you have told us we won't be getting an extra one. Where are these funds going? Where are the COVID funds? Vista Unified School District hired extra teachers to make sure the number of classes stayed low. What did you do to Vitale? You gave yourself a raise. That's all I'm saying. It's all about money. Our students have never mattered to any of you. Or I should say, these hoodlums have never mattered to you.
I'm done. Thank you. Ms. Givens, will you call the next speaker? I lost track.
Nina Garcia.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Vitale. My name is Nina Garcia and I'm a student at Del Rio Elementary. I'm here to talk about why I don't want to move to another school. I have been a student at Del Rio for three years. I love the staff that work here. We have events that include everyone. We learn about the importances of our colleges. Those are the reasons why I love this school and don't want to take it down or move it. Please take a minute and reconsider not closing our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nina.
Our next five speakers, Todd Madison, Noreen Yasapucci, Desiree Matwire, Lindsay Sheddak, Nori Baron.
Hello, Todd, you're on.
All right, I was waiting for the countdown. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we're discussing either closing one school or the other tonight. None of the above doesn't appear on the agenda. Talking about other ways to reduce expense that won't hurt our kids doesn't appear to be worth discussing. The financial hole our district has put itself in is millions of dollars deep, can only be filled with a check the size of an elementary school. In two thousand and twelve, we raised taxes on ourselves. Since then, revenue per student has increased almost six percent per year, close to three times faster than inflation. Almost fifteen thousand dollars per student or four hundred thousand dollars per classroom this year. But yet that's not enough to keep both Del Rio and Reynolds open, is it? We have a district where administrators cost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year and teachers cost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. But the district and board feel it's more important to give employees bonus raises than to use that money for our kids. Before that vote last, in the last board meeting, no one said, and after we give ourselves more money, we're going to close down a school so we can afford it. Did they? Taking candy from babies is so important, it's best to avoid letting parents know that upfront, isn't it? So we know our super makes three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars a year, but another fifteen thousand dollars was needed. We know the president of the teachers' union makes a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars a year, but another nine thousand was essential there. Schools for low-income Hispanic kids? Not so essential, are they? Last night, Dr. Sparks, with the total compensation of two hundred and three thousand dollars and a nice ten thousand dollar a year bump on top of that, told me that data was inaccurate. So since this is on agenda, I can ask a question. Dr. Norman, did Oceanside Unified really respond to a legal public records request with inaccurate data? Or was Dr. Sparks simply deflecting from the fact that giving bonus raises to people with nice six-figure incomes is more important to our district than providing local schools for low-income and Hispanic kids? I know you're all tired of hearing that, but the truth is hard sometimes, isn't it? Every parent can see school choice is what parents need. Yesterday's rally at the district office was attended by parents representing close to a million dollars in revenue. What if those parents could take their kids and their money elsewhere? I suspect administrators would be chasing them down to discuss keeping those schools open if that were the case. Those parents are hardworking people. They make a fraction of what our administrators make. Often, they don't have time to make their voices heard. There's nothing that would give more power to low-income parents than school choice. There's nothing that would give more power to low-income parents than school choice. Join us in that fight. We're going to be out starting this weekend, getting signatures on our petition. Sign up for email updates at Californiaschoolchoice.org to be notified when someone is in your area. Let's not keep speaking here and being ignored and seeing our schools closed. Let's force our districts to pay attention to what parents want for their kids. School choice is the answer. Californiaschoolchoice.org, thanks.
All right, our next speaker is Noreen.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Noreen Yasapucci. I'm from the Child Development Center. I am the permanent teacher, teacher at Ocean, I mean at Surfside Educational Academy. I am for modernizing Surfside Educational Academy. And the reasons, if we were to move to Del Rio, um, I think it's a beautiful campus. And we will move into a turnkey preschool for children ages three years to six years old. Now, reasons for modernizing Surfside Educational Academy. We are an infant toddler childcare program. Caring for children one month to three and a half years. We are not a preschool program. We will need, if we were to move to Del Rio, uh, we will need changing tables, a nap room, a kitchen to warm bottles, a toddler-sized play structure. Because currently the toddler, uh, structure, uh, the child, the toddlers would not be able to climb up the steps. They're, they're too high for them. Also, at our, also, our infant toddler childcare program is currently onsite at our Surfside Educational Academy. We will not be able to move in as soon as, we will be able to move in as soon as the ramps are in place. This is a turnkey facility for us. Um, we are, we are informed that the Infant Toddler Center will not be able to be moved to Del Rio. I have a question that maybe you could answer later, but I wanted to know if we move our program to Del Rio, will we share the building with the state preschool program? And also, I would like you to know, the board to know that we are a teen parent program. We provide services to students at Oceanside High School and El Camino High School. The teen parents travel on the Sprinter. And, oh, my kids almost, and the teen parents also prefer the Sprinter because it is easier for them to use their stroller and carry the diaper bag and their backpacks. And if they were to travel by bus to Del Rio, it would take them two to three buses and they'd have to carry all their gear down the steps. And in some, we would like to modernize Surfside Academy. The Infant Toddler Center would be turnkey. It has everything we need to educate our children. And it would be, there would be no added expense to the school district. So thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you. Desiree is our next speaker.
Hello, good evening. Good evening Superintendent Vitale, excuse me, and OUSD board members. My name is Desiree Matwire, a parent of two children that attend Reynolds Elementary. Um, they have had the privilege of being taught by some of the most dedicated, passionate and motivated mayas there in the second and fourth grade, um, in our two-way bilingual immersion program. The two-way bilingual immersion program has allowed them to become biliterate in Spanish. They are able to proficiently read, write, and speak Spanish, as this is the goal of the program. The dual immersion teachers have worked hard to make this program successful while collaborating with their traditional teaching partners at Reynolds to make our campus coexist smoothly. This probably took some time when the program first started, but Reynolds just flows. And now you possibly may separate us, and it's not right. I'd like to say that, um, if the district decides to close our school, which would be a huge mistake, it would most likely be sold off to developers that won't really care that a school was demolished to obtain this piece of property. They aren't going to be thinking about the children who have lost their neighborhood school. They aren't going to think that they should build a park instead of homes. Speaking of parks, Reynolds is left open on the weekends to be utilized for that purpose because these children don't have a park close by that could be walked to. To paraphrase trustee Alvarez, Reynolds won't be a waste of money to rebuild. We are actually going to be a great investment. I ask as a parent and a taxpayer that voted on our bond that was passed, that you rebuild Reynolds completely and keep our community neighborhood school Reynolds where it belongs. 4575 Douglas Drive, Oceanside, California, 92057. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay.
Hi, good evening, um, family and board members. My name is Lindsay Chedock. We have two students at Reynolds who are on the path to going to MLK and El Camino. Uh, their fur, their kinder and second grade years at Reynolds were during a pandemic. First and third were virtual. And this year is masked, second and fourth. This has been detrimental and then to add more challenges and challenges to their education in the future. Um, they're forced to endeavor social and economical changes and challenges every day by the pandemic. Um, keeping them involved, keeping them invested in their school is what's important. We feel and we fear that we will, that we will lose this generation and, but sorry, and the bright minds that they have in their future, if we expect them to have more changes in their educational path. Adding to, adding another layer to the already difficult time is asking too much of our teachers, our students, along with their families who have been asked to rise to all of these challenges. My concern as a mom is that our community school, our community environment will forever be changed. We have asked our teachers to teach over the computer. We've asked them to overcome obstacle after obstacle in teaching our children. We've asked our children to change the entire mode of learning to virtual, not anything relatively close to what they have known. And now we are potentially asking teachers and our kids, our students and our families to yet again adjust and change to overcome further mountains that you're proposing. We are in challenging times for everyone. We as adults and parents have to put the needs of our children's and their needs first. We need to stop asking our children to do more. We need to stop asking our teachers to keep teaching with these ongoing challenges. And we need to allow our children to rise and learn. We need to allow them to, um, have a say in their futures. We need to give them all of the tools to better their futures and to stop expecting them to climb the mountains we are volunteering, we are, we are volunteering them for. Allow our kids their schools. And Reynolds is our school of choice. We allow our students and staff to continue their educational path at the schools and with the staff that they choose, that we choose. This is about our students. This is about their future and not a financial decision. As the parent said before me, school, Reynolds is an investment. Schools are investments, not a burden. Keep our school, our schools where they belong and our students in those schools that they chose.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nori.
Hello. Hello. Um, I'm Nori Baron. I have a daughter at Reynolds Elementary in the dual-merge program. And it's such a great program. I had other kids that went to Del Rio and they weren't offered this opportunity. And so we moved to Reynolds and it's a great, great program with the pandemic that happened. My daughter ended up having social anxiety and she actually didn't want to go back to school because she was scared of people. Now you guys are talking about moving. And I don't know how to explain that to her. And I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. It's hard, you know, it's hard for all the parents to go through all this. I mean, we really made it through the pandemic. And we appreciate our teachers more because it's hard work. But to move them right now at this time, to make the decision right now, it's, it's awful. It's an awful time to do it just because our kids need to get back into the role of what is the normal school time. And it's, it's not easy right now for them. Wearing masks is hard. My daughter has asthma. It's not easy. And now I had to explain it to her that she's moving. And then what about the kids' safety? I keep on hearing these gang violence. But, I mean, Surfside comes from, has different places. Like kids come from all over the place. They seem to manage just fine wherever they are. Not saying they should move. I'm a little confused as to why they would put it, why would they put a school there? If it wasn't ready to be, for people to be put there as well, um. I just, I, I think you guys really need to consider when you guys are going to decide to move these kids. And at this time, I don't think it's the best for any, any schools to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Nori. Our next speaker is Michael Richardson.
Michael isn't accepting to be promoted.
All right, do you want to call the next five speakers? And if he jumps on, well, I see Tiffany is up next.
Okay, so when we try to promote you guys, you have to accept the promotion. So the next five is Michael Richardson, Tiffany Ketchum, Ashley Baiswenger, Ashley Girdo, and Kristy Lindford.
And I see Michael made it here, so Michael.
Michael, perfect.
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, at the last board meeting, I made a statement and I want to apologize for it. But, uh, unfortunately you cut me off before I could explain. Um, our frustration is that you, you, meaning the management and the board, uh, had no discussion, no debate, no interaction at all about this bonus, bogus bonus that you were giving.
Michael, this board meeting and public comments are focused on facilities and consolidation.
I understand.
So if your public comment is not on the topic.
My point is that you would not have to do these things to close schools and, and put kids in, in terrible positions if you didn't give yourself egregious bonuses and money. Uh, I, I only wanted to hear how the board wanted, how the board had planned to, to, uh, pay for the, the bill, how the board planned to solve the problem. But the bigger issue, and what I said was that we will, we will declare, I use the word declare war on you. Are you going to cut me off? I said, what, what I meant was, we're not going to hurt you. We want to stop you from hurting our kids. We want to get rid of all of you. All of you, including the board and the management of this school district, which are teaching our kids to hate each other and not teaching our kids to love America, to, to read and write and do arithmetic. And that's what we want.
All right, are you done? All right, he's done. I'm just going to remind our speakers, we're speaking on facilities and consolidation tonight. It's not a typical board meeting. This is a special board meeting to hear the community regarding that issue. So our next speaker is Tiffany.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. We could hear you, we don't hear you now.
I'm in for the Facebook group, Oceanside, sorry, Oside USD Parent Teacher Collective. We value information sharing, support for all issues our district, families, and teachers face, as well as linking us all into what's going on in our local community. Because we believe it can be better with more people getting involved. Personally, I'm not in support of closing or moving any schools. Enough is enough. I can't comprehend how OUSD can go through this pandemic saying there wasn't enough space to be socially distanced. But now there is too much space and it means merging schools into asset management, which we all know means close it and sell it to the highest bidder like Garrison, Pacifica, and Ocean Shores. Meanwhile, OUSD was recently awarded bond modi by, by voters, increasing our taxes to support schools in the rehab needed. Then after you got that money, you approved making a new office build for bringing all the district offices together to have easier collaboration, which we support. But nobody highlights that to do this, you move our ATP students with special needs, which is disruptive to them and the site that they're merged with. Most people don't understand that that all means to all these students. But I'm here to say, I see you. But wait, what about our schools that need to be rehabbed? Then OUSD awards raises to the teachers, which I support, but tax on raises for admins and higher-ups who already had higher salaries, which if voted on separately would likely not pass. But OUSD knew this, so that's why they packaged it in with a fancy little bow, but it's a pretty tacky one. Then as these huge raises were secured, the next topic suddenly is we need to save money. So let's close down school sites and merge schools, which will disrupt all the families it impacts. Then what happens when schools are merged to capacity and children are ready to return or join their homeschool? Um, will there be room for them to return or will they be brushed aside? You're impacting the most at-risk students in our district with either choice you make between the two plans on the table. Neither is acceptable. None of these schools deserve to be mistreated. My children are at Surfside due to being immunocompromised. And if I had to do this at Del Rio, it wouldn't be workable. So I'd be forced to leave the district. I'm asking you to reject both plans. Vote no and go back to the table. Stop cutting from our kids while protecting the highest earners. If the funds are not there to keep schools open, then you should immediately halt plans to build the brand-new office complex. Show us you can cut from the things that make you comfortable before you dare take another thing from our kids. I support our district, but I also support everyone being able to come to the table on a discussion and being considered equal. Not one of these schools is less important than the other. I support Surfside, Del Rio, Libby, and Reynolds families because I support all OUSD families. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your concerns.
Thank you Tiffany. Our next speaker is Ashley Baiswenger.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I have two children in Del Rio Elementary. Um, we travel a lot due to my job. And I have to say that Del Rio is one of the best schools my children have ever attended, even in the midst of a pandemic where my first grader is behind and reading at a kindergarten level because of the pandemic. My first grader is behind because she essentially missed her entire first, her kindergarten year. You're asking families in lower-income areas to walk further to put their children at more risk with the crime, the crime rate that's already happening in Southern California. You're asking these families to uproot their lives when they have to go to work at a certain time. The schools are essential to the communities. If you merge schools, you are against the Oceanside District and the CDC for social distancing. So if you're going to throw that out the window, does that mean our children have a right not to wear a mask? I was on the board meeting last night and the school from the state, the district got 50, it was $56.7 million in COVID funds to spread between now and 2024. On top of the money that you guys have now, we don't need to shut down schools. You guys need a better budget and do what's important for these children. Their mask, their social existence, the children are becoming socially awkward, which is all very important in social development in children. Stop doing what's best for you and start doing what's best for these children. Del Rio has a very good success rate. Their teachers know the students and parents by name and greet them every day. You're taking that away. You're putting children at risk. You're putting families in a more financial bind than anything. And if you need, then you need to get buses. If you want to be there for the children, get them buses for families who have to work. Families who have to go to work to make sure their children can get to school. You're enabling yourselves to do what's best for these children, because you're all about oneself and on what's best for everyone. Take both deals off the table, leave the community schools alone, and cut your own budget and stop taking away from the families that are already suffering. No one asked for this, but you guys can make it better for them. I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Ashley. Our next speaker is another Ashley, Ashley Gerardo.
Hi, good evening. I'm glad I was let back in. My internet disconnected. Um, so I just wanted to give a little bit, this is going to be like a little bit of an unconventional story, but it's my truth. And so I am glad that I get a chance to speak it. Um, and hopefully it leaves an impact on you. My husband was born and raised in Oceanside in a neighborhood called Solay. Because of the environment that he grew up in, he ended up dropping out of school, joining a gang, and eventually going to prison, falling victim to the school to pipe, prison pipeline and the prison industrial complex. When he was released and we were starting to plan our life, our future and our family, we knew that we had to break the cycles of poverty, abuse, addiction, and violence. So he left the life that he had ever known. We chose the neighborhood that we currently live in because it's on neutral grounds and the better options in Oceanside, which also offered the dual immersion program that our son is in, and eventually both of our daughters. Closing Reynolds Elementary is a dangerous move for a family like ours. Libby Lake and Del Rio have two active gangs in the area, which could mean a death sentence for someone like my husband going into that neighborhood to pick up his child. He's tatted from head to toe from his prior life. Um, and not to mention Libby Lake Elementary has nine registered sex offenders, according to Megan's Law. And Del Rio Elementary, the neighborhoods, not the schools, have said, has seven registered sex offenders. This is not a jab at anyone who lives in the area or attends those schools. I'm just speaking my truth for myself and my family. And like previously mentioned, Oceanside Unified School District received over fifty-eight million dollars in the American Rescue Plan. So my question is, how how are or how will those funds be utilized? And why are there only two options on the table? Why are us as parents, as taxpayers, as the people who voted for all of you on the board? Why are we finding out two weeks before a decision is being made? Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Our next speaker, do you want to call up the next crew or they are already there?
We still have Kristy Lindford.
I'm not seeing her on our list here.
Okay, so, um, our next speaker would be Alyssa Net Garza, Jimmy Figueroa, Eduardo Martinez, and Michelle Mora. And if Teresa Olivera is is she not here? Okay, so our next speaker will be Alyssa Net Garza.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Net Garza. I have four children in the Oceanside School District, two of which are enrolled at Reynolds in the Dual Immersion Program. We love our school, the program, and our amazing teachers. Stop closing these schools in our district and fix them instead. Enough is enough. You already closed and sold Pacifica, Claire Berger, Garrison. Where does it end? And what are you doing with the money you get from these properties? Here's a thought. Use it to fix the schools you have left. Use it to make our schools campuses safe and, and on a better quality educations. Stop giving the superintendent races every two years when she doesn't deserve it. Give that money to whom it belongs, our hardworking children. All of our children are worth every single penny of that money and more. If you remodels, if you remodeled Reynolds, you will be finally giving our students and teachers the campus they deserve. This will bring in students who hear of our great program, but have turned around and walked the other way once they see our school. The dilemma of the district of Oceanside closing down our schools due to lack of funds or fixing them is an insult to our community, parents, and most important, our children. Decision, decisions such as this is something that the district forgets. It's up to the parents and the community, not to the district or superintendent's decision only. We forget that the power is in the voice of the parents. The parents, the community suffers, suffers. And we've seen it at Garrison and San Luis Rey. It is an insult that you make decisions that you can't afford, such as what happens to those who walk to schools daily. You can't provide buses because you can't afford it. You can't afford that either. You neglect schools. Then when they get really bad, you close them instead of paying attention to the issues that get brought to you. Not only do you neglect the care, but neglect to have them responsible parties that should maintenance these schools do their job. We constantly waste money, but by not enforcing responsibility and duties. At any other locate, location, you don't do your job, you get fired. But here in this district, if you don't do your job, you just get racist. Please don't close any of these schools. Do your job fixed.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jimmy Figueroa. You're unmute, Jimmy, you gotta unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. I, my name is Jimmy Figueroa. I'm the Program Manager, Resilience Community Mentoring here in Oceanside, which is a program funded by the County of San Diego through the Juvenile Probation Office and Vista Community Clinic. Uh, we were created specifically by the county to mentor youth and young adults on juvenile probation here in Oceanside. I've been mentoring youth who have attended Ocean Shores and Claire Berger since two thousand thirteen. Um, when we discussed the safety issues about moving Surfside, which is Ocean Shores and the merger of Ocean Shores and Claire Berger, I know we changed the name, but Surfside is Ocean Shores and Claire Berger. Um, a year ago, when we merged those schools, had we said, hey, we're going to close down Ocean Shores and Claire Berger, move it to Del Rio, it would have been an immediate no from all practitioners, boots on the ground. Um, due to the safety issues that are, that are very real. Since two thousand thirteen, I've had a countless students who have been jumped for being in the wrong area, who have been stabbed, who have been shot, and who have been killed here in Oceanside. There was comments made at the, at the special public meeting where a board member referred to our students as hoodlums and also called some of these safety issues a false prophecy. Uh, to me, that, that was, um, it was a very ignorant thing to say. Um, it also showed, um, it was very insensitive, but it also showed the disconnect between certain members of our board and our community. I want to spend the last one minute and twenty-six seconds reading comments that I received from Surfside students in regards to this move. I will try to read as many as I can. The ones I don't, I will email to you. Student number one, comment, "To be honest, I think that's a very bad idea, moving Surfside to Del Rio." Most of the students that go there live in an area, so when their parents can't give them a ride, they can just walk there. And also, most of the students that go there hang out with a particular group in Oceanside. Now that school that they want to switch it to is almost in the middle of a whole neighborhood where most of the students will most likely come in contact with the gang in that area in reference to Del Rio. I think they should keep it how it is. It's a neutral location in reference to the Dipmar location, Surfside, where everyone can feel safe and not have to worry about anything. Student number two, "Being a student traveling to Dipmar Surfside, I like the location. I was, I wasn't living close to Dipmar, but it was a safe and neutral location. The majority of the kids who go to Dipmar live closer to the school, which helped them get to school. Also, if the school is transferred to Del Rio, I think it's unsafe. It's already in the deep valley, right in the deep valley. It would bring a lot of attention for gang violence and it wouldn't be safe. I don't think the spot is right. But right now at Dipmar, it's not located in the heart of a gang neighborhood. Del Rio is. If anything was going to go wrong, people close by can bring people or weapons to make things worse outside of campus. Thank you."
Thank you. Please email us for rest of those comments. Wait, our next speaker is Eduardo Martinez.
Can we move to Michelle Mora?
Sure.
Hello, uh, my name is Michelle Mora. We have lived in Oceanside since two thousand eight and have had four kids in the Oceanside School District. My older son attended Libby Elementary and my youngest just started there. We have been told in our I E P meetings, there is no budget for teachers, aides, and special education resources. My family has been told no throughout my older son's career in special education. But on the other hand, we are informed that district administrators and superintendents are taking pay raises. If the district is in such a dire position that they have to close entire schools, then there should not be any pay raises and those funds need to be used in support of the children. My younger son's teacher has said that there will be an impact within special education and classes may be moved to other locations. Why was this not outlined in the options provided by the district? Why is this population of kids not included in the initial review for options? They are not even being taken into consideration. This is a disservice to the children in this program and leads me to believe that the district is not being transparent about everything included in the plans. I reject both options and I ask for a more thorough review of where the money is actually being spent in the district. And I ask for more information on what exactly is happening in the special education program. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, our next five speakers will be Danny Lopez, Jeff Olson, Laura Fisher, and Lorena Carrasco. Jeff Olson. Go first.
Okay, thank you very much. So as most of you board members know, I moved from El Camino High School to Ocean Source High School to um, support those students. And I was shocked at how alienated and unsupported Ocean Source High School actually was. Four years later, we were told by Dr. Vitale and a team of people, we were going to move to a new location, which was going to be C B A. And thank goodness, especially from all the comments that Jimmy made, that did not happen. And C B A and Ocean Source High School merged together with the Independent Elementary School and Independent Middle School, which was at C B A, to the closed in two thousand and eight rundown Dipmar school site. Two and a half years later, we might see the Child Development Center working. After fifty-nine thousand dollars was, I guess, wasted in moving the Child Development Center over to the site, which will be stuck there and probably eventually torn down, as well as the cleaning cover of the carpets, the Chromebooks turned back and given to IMAX. We're finally seeing that we were not able to build our school, design it in a year, and then build the school of a dream. Dr. Vitale told us that she had a dream to build a destination, non-traditional school venue involving independent and direct instruction continuation high school. For the facts, all of you board members were at the meeting where Shannon Soto shared a PowerPoint with a spreadsheet saying that all of the sites that we could have moved to were going to cost one point nine million dollars and those fees were going to come from the developer fees. Where Ocean Shores High School was going to cost five point seven million dollars to uh, repurpose and renovate. You just sold Ocean Shores High School for almost eight million dollars. We've moved, if we move S E A to Del Rio, a elementary school will collapse regardless. So the decision, if you're going to vote on one of the two, has to be based on programs and services, not the people. All neighborhoods and all people matter the same. One neighborhood is not better than another. One building or one school site is not necessarily better than another. If this decision was made by Sacramento, what would they do? Remember, this decision will last forever. The people will be long gone. The school board will be retired. Most of the district officials will be long gone, relishing in their huge retirement with their huge paychecks. While the new people coming to the school will have to deal with those consequences. Yep.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry, your three minutes is up. Our next speaker.
Laura Fisher. Laura, you're on.
Okay, thanks. So, um, I was going to show you, I don't know why it's not, oh, there we go. Okay. Yay. All right. Guess who I'm rooting for? Del Rio. Del Rio's my heart. Del Rio is the heart of many and we're going to try not to get emotional here. Um, I've been at, I work at Del Rio now. I subbed at the wonderful Reynolds. I subbed at the wonderful Libby. But I went to Del Rio when Del Rio was all portables, when Hurley Dodd was principal, when Mrs. Tom was the best teacher in the whole wide world. And I want the students that we have at Del Rio now to have these same memories. I want them to have their neighborhood school. I want all the kids in our district to have their neighborhood school. We should not be closing these schools. We have to figure out another way. Um, I respect the hard work that all our board members do, that Vitale does, sorry, just going by last names, that everybody does here. I know it's not easy. I know y'all take a lot of attacks from people and they don't necessarily understand where you're coming from. I'm hoping that you are not hearing Charlie Brown's teacher right now as all of these parents and students, yay Nina from Del Rio, um, are talking to you. I hope you're really listening. Nobody wants this to happen. It's not good for anybody. Yes, Reynolds needs to be fixed. Let's figure out a way to do that without closing Del Rio. Do not close us. Do not send our kids somewhere else. Keep them where they are. We love them. We adore them. Um, Libby, like I said, all these are fine schools. You really need to listen. We do vote. This isn't a, hey, we're going to remember, but guess what? We will remember. We understand what the decisions you have to make. We understand it always comes down to money. But you need to take these students who have been through so much already and not move them again. Like one of the parents said earlier from Reynolds, don't move our kids again. Don't make these changes. They're dealing with so much right now. Um, uh, teaching the kids is a number one priority at the school, but guess what? S E L, all these other things we need, we're addressing social, emotional issues with them. There's so much kids are dealing with right now and we're doing our best to be there for them. Please do not move them. Stop this. Figure it out a different way. We worked hard for this bond money. Let's share it amongst all our schools. Thank you, Eric Joyce for, and Raquel for talking about that last time. Equity is key. All of our kids matter. I'm going to stop now before I get cut off like I did after the four hour meeting. Thank you. Yay, Del Rio. I love you.
Thanks, Laura. Looks like Eduardo Martinez is next.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Eduardo.
Hello, all. My name is Eduardo Martinez and I have a seven-year-old boy at Reynolds. I live right next to it. I just wanted to plead to I just wanted to plead to rebuild Reynolds for several reasons. I am active duty military and I commute 100 miles a day so my kid can go to school here. I am in San Diego now. The city of Oceanside, the data research, I am not 100%. It is accurate and biased perhaps, so that would like, I would like it to be revised due to the fact that all I've seen in the city in the last five years I've been here is nothing but growth, especially in the community, brightness to Reynolds, all the retirees, as was stated earlier, is being replaced by young families like myself. And we would look forward to it. We serve our country to to be able to have a good life. And in return, we would like it to be the same for you guys and this is not supporting our mission for for our kids to relocate them and have them walk. I do not feel safe, my kid going to a different school far away from my house. Where I, I plan to do, and as I heard earlier, it's not a safe neighborhood to walk, walk by Libby Park. And it's just a disservice to, to myself and family that will look forward to move here. Also, I believe these actions are on behalf, on the best interest of the members. Nothing has been clear. I lived here for five years right next to the school and this is, I just got informed because of the protests outside the school. That was the only way. So it, it is not transparent or clear. It almost seems like it's very difficult to, to get any information regarding any of this, perhaps because I'm not involved. But nonetheless, I, the actions taken here are not on the best interest of our kids or the future of our kids. And maybe we need to revise and look into the next, what to do with the, for elections come. This will be an impact that you guys will see coming down, down, down you guys. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next four speakers will be Nelson Cohen, Hannah Valentine, Mike Artifany Bianco, Cindy Etheridge, and Torrance Berg. That's our next five speakers. Nelson Cohen will be first. Give us a minute, please. Thank you.
Anne, will you repeat the five names again, please?
Nelson Cohen, Hannah Valentine, Mike Artifany Bianco, Cindy Etheridge, and Torrance Berg.
Let's go with Hannah Valentine first. Hannah, you can speak.
Hello, Hannah. You're up.
Buenas noches a todos. Y este, a mí me gustaría este decir que nos, que no cierren la escuela porque ahí este, los, mis niños están yendo. Tengo dos niños que van a la escuela y estoy muy contenta con la escuela y con todos los que trabajan ahí. Y quería decir también que Del Rio es una escuela del título uno, es de bajos recursos que necesitan más apoyo en muchas áreas educacionales. Y en segundo lugar, no habían notificado a los padres acerca del cierre de la escuela. Y por tercer lugar, la escuela de Surfside es una línea de estudiantes que solo van a plantear por dos días y están en diferentes ubicaciones de la Escuela del Río. No es una ubicación para las familias que asisten a la escuela de Surfside. Y yo pienso de que el distrito, el distrito escolar tiene fondos, tiene fondos para, para pagar. Tiene fondos para pagar y yo les pido que no, que no cierren la escuela porque ahí, ahí tenemos a nuestros niños y hay muchos papás que necesitan mucho apoyo como nosotros y muchas gracias por su atención.
Yes, I have two children at Del Rio. I'm very happy with this school. Del Rio is a Title I school. There's families with low income. And we need a lot of support in educational areas. The second thing I wanted to say is that we hadn't been notified with a lot of time about this decision. The third thing is that Surfside is not a location where local families attend. And the district needs to use the funds to, to cover a school where the local families will attend, like Del Rio. I'm asking you not to close the school. That's where we have our children. Thank you.
Looks like our next speaker will be Torrance.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Torrance Berg. To start off, I'm not originally from California. I came here from the Midwest for the Marine Corps. But my wife and her siblings, they, they all attended Del Rio, graduated from there and now my daughter attends there. So it's more than just a school to my family. Like this is actually someplace that they've all grown up from. And then I know a lot of, a lot of people have brought up the, the pandemic. And it, it's true. The pandemic has really affected all of our teachers, our staff, our students and our families. And being home during it and seeing the online training and seeing how hard the teachers worked to be able to educate the students as best that they could. I know a lot of the students fell behind because face-to-face contact's more important. And even now with them being back in school, like they can't, the, at their, their young age, it's very important for them to be able to see faces and they're still masked. A lot of students have issues with the mask. They don't know how to properly wear them and so on. But the point is like to move them, to shut down Del Rio, to move them to Libby, you're only adding to the chaos of what has been the past year and a half to almost two years now. Seeing it affect not only my daughter, but the other children around where they're scared to go in when they see people on public not wearing masks and just how it's affected them. And I'm not, I'm not saying shut down any of the other schools or replaying. No student deserves to lose where they feel safe, where they are learning, where they've developed a sense of community with those around them. And that, that goes with the students, the, the staff, the teachers, them all. Because it takes community of them all in order for, to pass on the knowledge that they're supposed to and develop these children as they, as they grow and as they learn. I don't agree with shutting down any of the schools. Budgeting could definitely be changed and function differently. But I hope that you take serious consideration from all the parents of all the schools that have spoken, or spoken today. Because this is the heart and soul of the community right there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Okay, so we have on the list Nelson Cohen, Mike and Tiffany Bianco, Cindy Etheridge. However, they are not accepting the promotion to be panelist. So if.
All right.
Tiffany, you just raised your hand. We just need you to accept.
There we go. We got Tiffany now. Tiffany, your public comment. You're up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, I'm at work. I just wanted to say that I am against the closures of Del Rio. My, two of my children attend Del Rio. They have since kindergarten and preschool and we love our, our teachers. We love our school. We just don't feel like going to Libby, even though it could be great. Everyone's school is wonderful. We don't want to have to lose our school to join to Libby. Please stop the closures. Please make sure that you put our children first. That's what we're here to do. Is put our children first and make sure that they're number one priority. We would appreciate you taking into consideration of listening to each and everyone. Time and time again, we will be saying the exact same thing, but we want, we love our school. Everyone's school is special. We appreciate you taking the time to hear us out. We stand for no closures at our household and we make sure that our teachers are going to be taken care of, which we feel would be, I don't know, I've been watching here and there on this, but I just feel like we love our teachers. We love our school. We would, we would appreciate it if you just kept everything where they're at. Build on their schools themselves, improve each school, make sure that each child is well taken care of, especially during this time, like as someone was saying previous to me, during this pandemic, they've already gone through so much and to lose some, lose something that they love would destroy some of them. So I appreciate your time. I don't have much time on here, so I have to go. I'm very emotional about it, but I will be there protesting against school closures till the very end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Lopez. You can speak now, Danny, after you unmute yourself.
Danny? You have to unmute yourself, Danny?
You hear me?
Now we can. Now we can.
Sorry. You know, I was, I've been here since 1978, 79. And my kids went to Libby School, not Reynolds. I live close to Reynolds. And I seen over the past years, the, what has been going on, you know, I liked when they, they remodeled the Ocean Side High School where I went. I went to El Camino. They did some of the remodeling too. Almost my teachers were nice teachers, but we came from the, those, those, those elementary schools. My daughter, they went to Libby School. I got one teacher right now and I got the other one became, she's, she's a teacher too, the second one. The third one went there too and became a hairdresser and I mean, they did pretty good with those classes. And when I'm, over the years, this is the first time that I heard that you guys shutting down the, 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 the schools and because there is no budget. I, I think there is a way to just save those schools. I don't think they should be destroyed because was those where those kids are really need to focus on, on their future. And if you guys going to shutting down all those, those schools and pushing them to the other schools, I can imagine how many kids they're going to have a, like they're going to be old, old. How can I say this? They're gonna, they're gonna be traumatized because it, it went to myself that I, I came, I came down from Carlsbad and when we moved down to Oceanside, I mean, I got scared because I didn't know how nobody and it took me a long time to get acquainted with my, the students in there and here in Oceanside. But another thing, if you guys push them to other schools, to me, I believe that's going to be too crowded. As, as my daughter, she, she teaches at Lake Elson or Elementary School and she's been telling me that she, they used to have like 18, 20 students and they push more like 28 students, 30 students, which is, I think is too much and it's going to be too crowded. I think there is a way to save those schools, you know, regardless of what the people that are coming, they're saying that yeah, Libby, it's, 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 it's a gang stuff. I, I understand it is, probably was, or, or, or maybe still or not, you know, I, I still live around and, but my thing is, my 30 is, I think there is a way to save those schools and, and, I mean, to repair them. I mean, it's not a big of a deal. They, they've been bringing that, oh, you guys do taking bonuses and this and that. Maybe if you guys cut here and there and, and, and focus on the kids, on their future.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, Danny.
We are done with public comment.
Okay. All right, board colleagues. We heard from many of our community. We also received the results from the survey link. I'm going to look at my board colleagues and see if anybody has a question that district staff can answer or if you want to discuss any concern. I'll start. I paused. I waited. So I am curious, have we consulted with OPD? Or anyone from the police department regarding the safety issue?
Sorry, Stacy, did, did you say, did we?
Yeah, did you? And do you have any information to share? I know we asked that.
I, I do. I'm, I have a statement from Chief Armijo. If you want me to read it, I certainly can and I can do that with his permission. So I'm guessing that's a yes. So this is what he wrote verbatim. OUSD is already managing having students representing rival gangs on the same campus. This is the case at the Oceanside and El Camino campuses. This is also the case at the middle schools, but to a much lesser extent. Although we cannot guarantee there will be no issues resulting from the proposed relocation of Surfside to the Del Rio campus, our experience along with the downward, downward trend of gang activity citywide in the last several years suggests that concerns regarding gangs should not be prohibitive. The same concerns were present when Surfside was being planned and OUSD, along with our school resource officers successfully managed them. While having plans in advance of the moves will be prudent, it is also important to note that in approximately the last 15 years, the number of documented gang members in our city has gone from over 1,100 to nearly 300. Additionally, gang motivated violent crime is down nearly 50% compared to the same time last year, continuing an overall downward trend that has been occurring for approximately the last 10 years. None of this information is intended to suggest gang crime is no longer of any concern. The police department dedicates significant resources towards preventing and suppressing gang crime. We consider OUSD to be a valued partner and will assist in any planning efforts to address the aforementioned concerns should the district move forward with the merger and relocation proposals.
Thank you for sharing that. Does another board member have questions?
We heard several community members bring up profits for properties sold. Are there restrictions on what money from that are sold can be spent upon? Dr. Vitale, I'm not sure if you're.
Yeah, we're, no, we're, we're hearing. There are no restrictions on what that can be used. It needs to be used on for one-time expenditures. And my guess is likely, we'll have to talk about that, but likely this board will put that back into our facilities. Our needs are way greater than the $160 million of bond money that we have. But you have not yet discussed or decided how to use those funds. The only thing I would say is they will need to be used for one-time expenditures, like improvements of facilities or things that you buy one time.
And so the suggestion being one-time expenditures is just for clarity sake for anyone that's, that that money will not continue to come in. So if you spend on something that you need to spend over a year, you have to then take money from another place to fund that.
Yes, we. Yes, uh, we would, we would never recommend that we use that money for any, any kind of ongoing expense. We would never budget it that way, nor would we recommend that way, nor could we even, I wouldn't even say legally do that. You can only use that money once because it is not reoccurring.
So for example, it could not be used for raises or as, as to support raises, as everyone has grabbed onto in the public and rightly so, they've grabbed onto it because that's the headline that some folks want to make, but you can't use that money for raises in a practical matter. Is the point I was making.
That's correct. You cannot.
There were concerns about um, special education programs being moved. Are any of the scenarios inclusive of a move of a special education program from one side to another?
Hi, this is Andy. The scenarios that we put forth would entail a move for our mod severe students and it would also be for our special education preschool students. And so I've already had meetings. We can only look so far into the future until we have direction from the board. But we are working with the special education department here to see which students would be impacted in their families and where we could relocate those programs in a close proximity. And so that would potentially be looking at Fusat. It could be looking at Nichols. Um, it depends on which way we go with our sites. If we would then look at Reynolds, if that were a site that we'd want to look at. Um, so yes, the current, right now, we're looking, the reason that we do that is these programs are considered regional programs. So we look at the students that are in the area. Typically, you don't have one of these classes at each site. You look at the sites in general in different regions of the district and you put them at a site so they, they can be moved. And I don't say that lightly because we're talking about students and families and staff. But in answering your question, there are regional programs that we could put at other sites.
Do students typically attend, uh, let's say this special education preschool more than one year? So if, if the program is moved, is a student moving to a new site per se?
Typically, the students are three and four years old, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's their home school. They would typically attend for one or two years and then go to their home school for, it depends because we don't know at that age. Um, we're always hoping that students would enter into the general education system. Um, and so we don't know where they would go. Typically, they would go to their home school.
How many sites do we have across the district that have a special education preschool program? I know I'm asking you a direct question that you may not.
I don't have that on hand, but I can get that for you. Um, I can get that information for you, hopefully within this meeting. And so if I do, I'll get that for you, absolutely.
So two, two programs are moved in both options?
Libby has um, special education preschool and Libby has a mod severe class, actually two mod severe classes. And so we would look at where we'd put those programs. And then Del Rio has um, special education preschool. They do also have state preschool and we're looking at um, what we'd like to do with the state preschool program, considering that we have TK that's being expanded for our four-year-olds. And so we'd look at both those programs.
So that goes into one of my overarching concerns about, um, actually about both, both options. And this is less a direct question and more just something for everybody to think about. We are talking about school sites that are not, we say they're not fully utilized, but then in every situation that we have, we have to add space to school sites to make it work. So then you're, you're ending up with a school site that is at completely full capacity and in most cases beyond because we're adding modulars or adding some kind of classrooms to each of these sites. So it, it seems like they're closer to capacity than it sounds like in the original presentation, you know, like we, I know we have some extra space according to like the loading numbers.
Right.
But when you look at the school sites themselves, most of the classrooms seem to be utilized, even though they have lower numbers than they maybe had before. They seem to have special programs that fill spaces and other.
Well, and, and that's it. So looking at the Libby scenario with moving Del Rio into Libby, we did hold out uh, two classrooms to allow for childcare and then we added the four for the extra space. But I still think we're gonna end up with even more extra space and maybe not need one of those modulars for the additional space because it is a declining enrollment area. And I know that it's been expressed, well, what if all the kids come back? The, the kids have come back. Um, the majority of children are back in school and so we're not anticipating that we're gonna have a bump in enrollment moving forward. Um, so we are, it looks, from what we've analyzed with Principal Mora, uh, we can accommodate all of the classes to go into Libby. And then we would add the extra rooms to have the additional space. But as I just said, we could lose even more students rolling into next year. The challenging part is we are looking at a snapshot in October. And everyone who has worked in an, an elementary site knows that there's movement in and out with our families for lots of different reasons. And so what's happening at seabed's time, which is the, you know, first Wednesday in October, to when you get to the end of the year could look really different. And so we need to keep monitoring this all year to make sure that we have a smooth transition moving forward and I believe that we will.
And additionally, two of those classrooms right now are scheduled for intervention teachers and intervention teacher funding does not persist once the COVID funding has expired.
I can pause so somebody else can jump in.
Keep going, Eric, keep going. You're fine.
Uh, I just say like a couple of other things. The, all these scenarios kind of run on some assumptions too, that the, the students are gonna continue to go to whichever school site. And then I'm also, when I look at the boundaries of the school sites that we, that we brought up, I, I have some concerns and I think, again, I think boundaries can address some of the issues that we're talking about outside of, uh, of what we do. And then, um, another thing that I looked up in between this meeting and the last meeting is I know we had some numbers in the presentation about in regards to equity in the three school sites. And so I have the numbers from the last three years. Let's see if, I don't think I've ever, I've never shared screen. Let's go to see if I could share screen. But if you look at the socioeconomically disadvantaged family percentages at Libby, Del Rio and Reynolds, this year, uh, they look more similar than they have in many, many years. And I don't know if that's a one-year move or if there's just a lot of movement that happened during the pandemic between families moving to school sites. Some families may be moving, you mean, out of the city. But um, historically, and this is not historically like twenty years ago, source historically like last year and the year before, the two thousand twenty and the two thousand nineteen data do show a significant difference between the socioeconomically disadvantaged populations of uh, Reynolds, which is typically at sixty six and then sixty nine percent for the two years prior. And then Del Rio and Libby, which both have hovered around ninety percent, socioeconomically disadvantaged over the course of those years. For whatever reasons, Del Rio is much, is ten percent lower than it was the previous two years this year. But I just wanted to point out to the board that there are definitely equity reasons to be considering these, these institutions differently. And the historical data, and again, recent historical data um, is, is a big piece of that evidence. So I'm not sure if, if you all have an idea about what's going on with the numbers, why they look so different this year than they do two previous years or three.
Are you looking at SED from CalPads or you, are you referring to low income for LCFF count?
LCFF.
Okay. Um, there was last year and it's something that we've discussed at length with our LCFF numbers. Um, because there, we were in COVID and there was a shift in how that data was gathered. It wasn't as accurate as it has been in years past and that's why this year we had such a uh, strong kind of shift in how we collected it. Um, but I'd be happy to look into it and, and examine why it would be different. But this year, we, we went out of our way above and beyond to make sure that we reached out to our families all the way down to personal phone calls from each site to make sure that families were reporting if they qualified for LCFF, where that hadn't happened in the past. And it really just relied on previous to last year, the um, applications for free and reduced lunch, which a lot of families don't fill out, who may very well have qualified. And then last year, that, that kind of was muddled and not clearly communicated. So we didn't have accurate data.
That is a really important work that you and your team and did this week, this year. So I'm really thankful for that. I just wanted to, to present a little bit of the, the board to see how the numbers have have definitely changed this year and it is an atypical year when, when it looks at the LCFF numbers. So for that, for those specific reasons with that data, understanding that those two school sites, that is why we do have members of our community that do see those sites as typically inequitably served. And that historically, if you think about merging those two sites, there, there are some concerns there about uh, why that would be extremely concerning. So for me, uh, that remains a very strong concern. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that or not, or.
I have a concern about facilities and space. I walked both campuses today and met with several staff members. I mean, I just look at Libby, they're both beautiful schools. But the space issues, storage issues, if Libby, Libby is designated to be a community school, we're gonna be bringing in outside organizations to support the school, whatever that ends up looking like. It's exciting work. But are we gonna have the space for it if it's full at capacity with students? And that kind of concerns me. Also look at the shortage of staff that we have. I don't see that changing in the future regarding um, supervision and stuff on that playground. And we're already struggling at many of our sites to cover, cover some of those positions. So putting all these kids together could be a safety issue on the campus with supervision. And then I like that Libby, Libby doesn't have a lot of storage like Del Rio does. So you have teachers coming over potentially and where are they gonna put their storage, their stuff? Cause it, it's not the same. I, I looked at Del Rio, I went, I was going to the Cubbies and stuff, so I have some concerns about that. I have the concerns about timing, the timing of this because coming off the pandemic and going onto a school site today and actually watching a circle of students and a couple of them broke down. And it wasn't about this topic. It was just about life in general and coming back to school and the social, emotional that, issues that they were having. So that to me, I have concerns about that. Is this the right time to do a move like this? And what is the impact on our students?
Are we, are we just having some comments tonight and our, our observations and we're, we're planning to come back next meeting to make a decision, right? Or are we?
Yes, I think that's.
Here, so are we? Do we take more public input next meeting or is, was it closed this evening?
No, we'll take more of the decision. No, we'll take more public input, but the decision will be next week.
Okay, okay. I, um, just to offer a couple of points, I appreciate all the input that we got. I know all of our schools are popular. I, I know I made an inartful statement last meeting about a a program being particularly popular versus other programs which are also really popular. So I, I apologize for that statement. It's very inartful use of words by me and I meant no intent by that. The um, the value of our, of our schools, of the TWI, of the, of the Del Rio family and of the Libby families is, are enormous. And our, our challenge is, I mean, for one, in one basis, I'd like us to think about this over the next week and think of one option of thinking about setting aside, how would this discussion be going if Reynolds wasn't, if Reynolds was only ten years old, for example? And we weren't, we weren't talking about having to uh, build, rebuild that campus. Would that change the inflection of this discussion? We're really at down to, you know, what is it, how many students does it take to have a, uh, an efficient or manageable or a economically viable school? Is it three hundred and eighty at uh, Del Rio or is it four hundred and eight at uh, Libby? And you know, we need to maybe do some more work in that, in that area. Uh, I don't know what that magic number is. Our residents are telling us, you know, they'll say a hundred kids is fine for a school. Um, cause it's right next door and we go there and our teacher's there and we still got, you know, you know, twenty kids in a classroom and um, lots of play space and um, why can't we do that, you know? So yeah, we need to think about that a little bit more uh, in terms of in the future if we're gonna be looking at. You could even argue that you should swap Libby along the lines of Stacy was taking and move Libby over to Del Rio because it's a better spatial place right now. It's got more space. And it's got Melma Bishop Park next door too with a gym in it, which by the way, could have solved Surfside's gym problem if we happened to put Surfside over there. But um, it's a, it's a broader facility there. So I'm, I'm, um, I'm thinking about all this stuff and I appreciate the input that we got. And I look forward to um, a decision next week.
I think my biggest thing is I, the fear of the consolidation of schools. We look at what the pandemic has done to our students and how it's affected our, our students overall um, at every school site, no matter which school site you look at. And I look at our, our special ed programs and if you have a mod to severe at one school site that you're going to move again, we already have a pan, they're, they already suffered through a pandemic and now we're gonna move them again to another school site. So you're, you're putting them through again, more stress, more movement that, that they just don't need in their lives at this point because it, they're, they're just starting to just get back into an environment where they're feeling safe again, where they're feeling comfortable, where they're learning and they're, they're just doing things differently than they had been in the past. We're gonna move them again and we're gonna do this shift. That goes for every program, whether it's mild to, to mod or mod severe. Every, every student, it's even for our TK programs that we're gonna shift them and they're gonna go to another site. They're gonna do this, they're gonna do that. It, it becomes one of those things of, like Eric said, do our boundaries with our boundary changes, if we change our boundaries and we focus on that part of it and, and make that the priority in the meantime during this, is that the, the best way to go now as opposed to consolidating and and making these shifts and, and then only modernizing a certain school and moving these students into another school and squeezing them in there and splitting certain schools a certain way because it doesn't make sense at this point. Splitting kids up who have grown up together from kindergarten to third, fourth, fifth grade is difficult. And you know, I, I've, I witnessed it when we moved and we shifted, you know, we, we had to merge other schools. And it's, it's not fun for these families. It's not fun, it's not great for the students. They, they even to this day, when you look at the students that were merged to another school site, even now going into junior high, they still um, have different issues that go on in their lives because of, of the moves that they've had to shift and make already. So the fear of what this is gonna do in a pandemic to these students, is it fair to them and the families? And so is this the right time to do it all? I don't think so. I've never been for merging schools. I've never been for closing them. I've never, there's a lot that I haven't been supportive of in this whole process. And it, this is definitely not the right time. So do we need to shift our conversations and shift in what we're doing so that we can just make things happen differently so that the students are the priority, which is what they've always been. They've always been our priority for all of us, for the admins, for everybody, for superintendent. They've always been a priority for everyone. So if we just keep that focus in everything that from this point and we keep that in mind and everything in every conversation that we have because are we wanting to be transparent? Are we wanting our families to understand and to be able to communicate and to know that we're having these conversations? And we're being honest with them that, that financially, things aren't the greatest, but right now there's things that can happen and we can do things. And we're going to be doing things and we're going to have conversations and we've had conversations and we've had to do things that we didn't want to do. But we're going to continue to still make the students the priority. So again, the biggest thing for me right now is this the right time to be having this particular conversation about consolidating a school right now. Because like a parent said earlier, if we, we move certain kids, we, and we, we get through this pandemic, everybody's back to normal, whatever the new norm is, we get back to a point, our school's gonna fill up and it, just like, you know, Dr. Vegan said, are we gonna be at a point where the kids aren't gonna fit because storage, things are going, it's a community school, things are coming in, programs are coming in. Everything's gonna, then we're not gonna be overloaded and then we're not gonna be able to fit people where they need to be because if we have homes coming in all over the city, unfortunately, the way I feel, but there's homes coming in all over. And so um, what is that gonna do to each one of our schools? And, and then the shift happens, then what? And then if the shift happens, then what? So I need, I go back again, reconsider the consolidation as a point right now.
Cool. Just a point, Stacy or, and Raquel, good points, Raquel, I appreciate that. And we all, at one point in time, got on a, am I muted? I'm muted, okay. At one point, we asked staff to move forward with this effort, and so that's why we're here today. So it's been our power to shift its gears next week, if that's what we want to do. I do want to make a comment though about, and I'm looking at the boundaries for the elementary schools, just as a map. I have, you guys have all seen them, but I want to just point out to you guys that while looking at the boundaries and doing a shift effort, maybe something we want to entertain in the next year or so. I want to remind you all that that is a very difficult conversation if it's going to be producing immediate results. It's an easy conversation if we're going to say, well, we'll draw the lines, but everybody who's going where they're going now can stay where they're going now until their kids graduate, until their, even their brothers and sisters graduate. That's easy to do and redraw the maps, but it doesn't change much, right? So I want to be cautious about a panacea of boundaries. In this particular instance up here, there may be some more to look at it, but I don't think it's an immediate panacea. Perhaps the panacea is, we grow the community school at Libby into such a fantastic program, and we grow a brand-new Reynolds School, and we get kids coming in from all over. And we solve our problem that way with more kids coming in. Round up for the night, for tonight. I think we got a lot of good input from everybody. Appreciate it.
Again, I had information for trustee Joyce. We have 11 FTE for our sped preschool program. The number of classes varies at each of the sites because they are split, and then kids are on different programs. Some come two days a week, some of them come three, but it's 11 FTE. We have three FT at Del Rio and two at Libby.
Thank you. The only other thing that I didn't bring up was that that promise of Surfside, and I am, it's still there, right? That promise of that did mark campus, the Surfside, calling it Surfside up Del Rio would be a little bit strange too, because it'd be so far.
It's just market, it's still Oceanside.
But the idea of what we can build there, what we can still build there, and what those students can achieve with that investment, it's a big promise to a population that has, that needs to be fulfilled. So I would just, that's another piece that I'm holding on to.
I would agree with that.
I don't think that was written in stone or blood, but I hear you.
It wasn't, but the thing when you get on the school board is that you hear about all the old promises, right? And this is one that I was around for, and it wasn't that like, you know, this is going to be a forever thing. We know that we have, we have to be reasonably flexible in our decision-making, for sure. We have to respond to the challenges that come to us. But I do remember that conversation with that staff and how much we asked them to move mountains to make it work. So I would love to make it work for them too.
You know, I had a conversation, I did ask the question of how many, how many babies are we going to be having coming in into this program? And we've got some coming in here pretty quickly, and so we've already got that facility ready to go, and we can just make that with those ramps and make that happen. So these students can have what they need at that school site, at Surfside, because it's there already, and we can just make it amazing and do what we need to do. Like Eric said, we had many conversations, and we listened to many people within the community. We listened to the students, and we listened to the staff. And we asked a lot of them, and it was difficult for many. And it wasn't a quick fix, and it wasn't an easy transition for either school site, but they did it, and they made it happen. And they're making it happen. And so to give them a shift again, and for these students that already struggle, and they're making it there, the fact that they're making it there and they're doing what they need to do to get there, I applaud them. And to do that shift again to them, it just doesn't work for me. And so I think we need to make our promise, or keep our promises.
We're getting into decision-making here, I think.
Yeah, I think we're doing that on November 2nd.
I would just say it's really exciting to build something with them in mind, with the security and all the things that are necessary for that site to function. Yeah.
And it will be, it will be exciting to rebuild Reynolds, brand-new too. Both of them. How about that?
All right. On that note, I encourage my board colleagues, if you have any more questions, please. We have a week before we meet again on November 2nd to make a decision. And please send your comments or questions to Dr. Vitale, so she can get them answered for us as a group. So something else resonates. And I want to thank everybody that provided comments on the survey, sent numerous emails, as well as public comment tonight. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, thank you, staff.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation tonight.
Yes, thank you.
All right, meeting's adjourned at 8:17 PM. Good night.
Night, all.